Well, the statistics say that 22,700 women this year in Canada will be diagnosed with breast cancer. Fifty-two hundred of those will not survive. And that 200 men will be diagnosed, and 55 of them will not survive that. So, the efforts to move forward, to continue to raise funds to find a better cure for this, has proven since 1986, there's a 30 percent higher rate of survival because of the efforts of the Canadian Breast Cancer Association. And as, no surprise to anyone, CIBC since 1986 has been the main sponsor in our community involvement with CIBC Run for the Cure. So, it's my pleasure to be here.
Thanks very much for being here. We certainly appreciate it. This is also an opportunity for the City of Grand Prairie to express their support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month by making a proclamation. And so I have that proclamation here in front of me tonight, and I'll make that right now. Whereas, breast cancer is the most common cancer in Canadian women, and is a serious disease that will affect 22,700 women, and 200 men, and their families this year. And whereas, it is of great importance that money be raised to fund breast cancer research projects and community programs. And whereas, the Canadian Breast Cancer Foundation strives to be an effective advocate, a trusted leader, a respected partner, a resourceful catalyst in creating a future without breast cancer. Therefore, I, Bill Given, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Grand Prairie, Alberta. Signed, this first day of October 2012. And so, I do that, and would like to recognize CIBC for their work. I know many of us have probably had an opportunity to participate in the in-person Run for the Cure. Great to hear that there's other options. A virtual run is fantastic, so...
Yes, and Mr. Given, actually, we are waiting for a stamp of approval from the Canadian Breast Cancer Foundation, that they are going to make Grand Prairie an official run site for all of northern Alberta and northern B.C. And we were told they were 99 percent in vote to make Grand Prairie an official run site. And we should know within the next month or so if that is for sure. And when that happens, the Canadian Breast Cancer Foundation steps in and helps support all of northern Alberta with that.
That's fantastic. Excellent news. So, it's my pleasure to make this proclamation. Thank you so much for your efforts on behalf of Breast Cancer Awareness. If I could, maybe I'll come around and we can present this to you in front of the...
Wonderful.
Okay, with that happy news out of the way, we continue on with the delegation portion of our agenda. This is, as I said, an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address counsel on any community-related matter. Doesn't look like we have anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and move on to public hearings, which would be next, but we have none. We have no unfinished business, so that takes us right into reports. And item 8.1 bylaw, C-1100-185, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Mr. Wright, are you going to introduce this for us?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Given, members of city council. Stuart Wright, Planner with the City of Grand Prairie. Bylaw C-1100-185 is a request to amend the city's land use bylaw. The subject property is addressed 972-332nd Avenue, legally known as the East, 2.94 acres of Lot D, Plan 4144KS. The request is to rezone the property from IG, General Industrial District, to IH, Heavy Industrial District. And administration requests that council gives first reading to bylaw C-1100-185 in order to allow administration to advertise the bylaw amendment, and also that council establishes Monday, October 29th, 2012, at 6:30 P.M. in council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Wright. Counselor Rice?
I am prepared to move first reading of bylaw C-1100-185.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So, motion for first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries.
I move that council establish Monday, October 29th, at 6:30 in council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing for that land use bylaw amendment, bylaw C-1100-185.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location of that public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, bylaw C-1265A to amend the transportation system bylaw. Mr. Wright?
Sure.
Item 8.2, bylaw C-1265A to amend the transportation system bylaw. Is there someone to introduce that? Oh, Legislative Services, okay. Thank you. Sorry, Stuart, didn't mean to put you on the...
[laughter]
Ms. Turney.
Thank you, Mayor Given. You have a report attached in your agenda, members of council, that outlines very briefly that the City of Grand Prairie council had passed the transportation system bylaw C-1265 to identify and create categories, arterials, and those types of roads within the City of Grand Prairie back in April 2012. When the bylaw was reviewed in some great detail by the provincial government, who is required to sign off on this bylaw, some errors and omissions were identified that required an amending bylaw to rectify the oversight. Part of that process involves a public hearing for the amending bylaw, and then the minister can proceed with signing the bylaw after that point. So, we are recommending that first reading be given to bylaw C-1265A, and secondly, that council establish October 29th at 6:30 for the public hearing for this particular bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Turney. Any discussion or debate, or, excuse me, a motion for first reading? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1265A to amend the transportation system bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So, we'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
I move that council establish Monday, October 29th, 2012, at 6:30 P.M. in council chambers, city hall, as the time, date, and location for the public hearing for bylaw C-1265A.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That was all of our report items, and that takes us into committee business. Item 9.1, Counselor Gustafson, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held September 18th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing coming forward, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council allocate $60,000 from the Alberta Municipal Infrastructure Program to undertake a traffic planning study for the area between 100th Avenue and 132nd Avenue, and 108th Street and 116th Street to assist in the development of amendments to the area structure plans.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
I'll move that council appoint Ms. Carlena Enns as the Development Authority to exercise development powers and duties on behalf of the city in accordance with the land use bylaw C-1100.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move, excuse me, I'll move that council award RFP-2955212 Engineering Services Contract to Goldar Associates for the Grand Prairie Reservoir Feasibility Study Phase II in the amount of $194,859 excluding GST, as the highest qualified company to perform the work. And that funding be allocated from the Grand Prairie Reservoir Feasibility Study, and the additional $20,000 be allocated from the Northeast Storm Basin Study.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, we had a really long meeting. It almost cut into lunchtime, but we were able to...
[laughing]
Yeah, he's been beside me for a long time. Maybe he's wearing off. So, we, the South Montrose concourse design came up on the table, and we decided to send that out for detailed design drawings. Ms., Christine Donnelly, our Engineering Services Manager, came forward with some recommendations on some capital budget items to deliberations, budget deliberations about traffic signals on 99th Avenue, and some more paving of some streets on 124th Avenue, 132nd Avenue, 100th Avenue upgrades. And of course, strategic roads priorities will be forwarded on to council budget deliberations next month. We approve the Ms. Carlena Enns. She's been with us for quite some time now. She will be able to help the public with their land use dilemmas when they come to the city to perform a better service for our customers. And of course, we had the reservoir feasibility study go through, too, so that we can clean up our reservoir. And we had some correspondence from some of our neighbors out in the county on Range Road 54, hoping we would maybe pave it, but it's a little out of our, a little across the line there to be paved in that. So, maybe after a bunch of annexation, we'll be able to do that, but nothing's going to happen with that anytime soon. And that's it all, Mayor Given.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. That'd take us to 9.2 in the Community Development Committee. Your neighbor there, Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held September 18th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing coming forward, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve resurfacing for six diamonds at South Bear Creek in the amount of $240,000 to be funded from the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And further, the same motion, council recommend that additional improvements or repairs at the South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds be referred to the 2013 budget review.
Sure. Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Maybe we'll take those as two separate motions. We'll deal with the first one first.
Okay.
Yeah. They certainly come across...
I'll pull back my further...
Yeah. So, we'll deal with the first motion first, to resurface six diamonds for $240,000 from the Financial Stabilization Reserve, as Counselor Crokin highlighted there. Open for discussion or debate, or Counselor Crokin, do you want to speak to it?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd just speak to that. The diamonds are in, they have been reviewed by Lori Berry, and we do need to have some immediate work done right away. That's why it's split into two different parts. First of all, if we can just do the resurfacing of the six diamonds, then we can touch the balance of it when we review our budget, the 2013 budget review. There is money in the budget, but we have to approve the first part to get that done this year.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm glad to see this coming forward, because South Bear Creek is a very well-used area, and I think there's been a lot of years. You can almost say it hasn't been really updated lately. And Mississippi Park's getting a lot of funds lately, and maybe in the three-year budget falling in the next council, they may have a look at South Bear, but I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So, I'm wondering about a maintenance program in the future, or is there one in place, or is this something that council has to budget for on a regular periodic basis? Like, every five years, you're going to see a quarter million dollars go towards upgrading these facilities. Did you speak about that at the...
Can I refer that to...
Sure, sure. I see the Community Living Director, Mr. Roth, might have a little bit of input on that.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly, administration does have limited budget for some maintenance at that particular location, as well as South Peace Ball Association does do provide some maintenance and reinvest in the diamonds at that particular location. However, the diamonds are at such a state where it's beyond normal maintenance. It does require some significant repairs.
Okay. But obviously, something like that builds up over time. So, going forward, are we looking at stepping up that maintenance?
Ms. Roth?
Your worship, certainly this would catch it, get us caught up. And going forward, yes, that's certainly something that we'll have to factor into our budgeting process.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I'm fully supportive of this motion as well. These six diamonds are on the west side. There are some other work and some bleachers and some safety things happening on the east side, the main diamonds, that isn't funded, but will become to council during that debate, and we'll have a discussion at that time in terms of whether we want to increase that. But I guess my thinking, Dan, too, is that I think that, I think the ongoing maintenance, I do think that we're going to have to put some money aside, and every five to 10 years, I think that it would be kind of an expectation that we're going to have to reinvest in those diamonds.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Counselor McLean?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, and also, I look at the Mississippi plan that has South Bear in it, and you can't do everything at once. We all know that. And Mississippi, the pavilion and the park area is getting it. So, I guess future council to direct which areas some funds are going to go is very important. And if you've walked through South Bear lately, you'll notice that it's probably going to need some fixing in the next few years.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So, Counselor Crokin, you made that second part of that motion already, that council recommend additional improvements or repairs at South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds be referred to the 2013 budget review. We can vote on that. I think it was a referral, probably could have gone direct from the committee to budget review, but that's fine. We'll deal with it here. So, any discussion or debate on the motion to refer to the budget review? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, we are not off the hook yet. You've got some more business, hey?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the Peace Wapiti Speed Skating Club for the construction and operation of an outdoor long-track speed skating oval for a one-year term, based on the contract as amended.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Would you care to speak to it, or any discussion or debate on the motion?
And as, thanks, Mayor Given. At Community Development, I can't remember the lady's name that spoke to it, and they wanted to get going on it straight west of the Eastlink Center, or more so the...
Skateboard Park.
Skateboard Park is right in there. Yeah. So, they can get leveling it before it freezes and get it down there. So, it was a go-ahead.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, one more piece of business.
It's usually Counselor Rice that's long-winded, but I'll be to take the spot tonight. I move council approve providing one-year Eastlink Center memberships at no cost to participants in the pre-clinical network medical education pilot project.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Discussion and debate? Counselor Rice?
Could somebody do a Reader's Digest version of what pre-clinical network medical education pilot project is?
Counselor Crokin, do you want to speak to that, or...
I'll have, Gary does have all the papers on that.
Okay. Mayor Given.
Mr. Roth? Your worship, essentially, that is a program where there are resident doctors or specialty residents that are doing their residency intern training here in Grand Prairie.
And how many are there?
There are 13 that'll be involved in the program within the next year.
Is this a new program?
I don't believe so. I believe that this program has been in place before.
So, the, this is also the program that the Chamber of Commerce has been working on supporting for a while. These are relatively new doctors who are doing their residency here in Grand Prairie. They do their, I think, second and third years of residence here. The Chamber was the one that came forward with the request. This is an opportunity to ensure that those new physicians have an opportunity to participate in everything that Grand Prairie has to offer, so that hopefully they'll consider us when their residency is up, and they can choose wherever they want to go and work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think this is very, very good, because with the new hospital builders, talk about, of course, nurses being trained, but also possibly so many years of doctors being trained there as well. And as we all know, there's a shortage. A lot of people don't have a doctor within our city, and some people actually go out to the neighboring towns, far as way Spirit River, Grand Cash, Sexmitz, New Clinic to see doctors. So, I think it's a good step in the right direction to get a few more doctors in the city, and I'm really hoping that the government does train some doctors in the hub, northwest hub, City of Grand Prairie.
Yeah. Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Maybe just to, if there's no other discussion, just to close that, the budget on that was in a range between $12,000 and $15,000. That is if they're all used. And this is deferred dollars. This isn't cash out. It's just if they do drop in and do a swim or work out, that would be the costs.
Yeah. Basically, a gift and kind, essentially, rather than actual cash out. Yeah.
That's right, Mayor Given.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
I still have one motion, Mayor Given.
Oh, well, actually, that's item 9.3, not 9.2. Point, whatever. So, we'll...
Oh.
Okay. There's a motion coming from the special CDC meeting this afternoon.
I'll bow to that one, but I would have carried it with 9.2.3.4. But anyway, there is one thing I'd like to highlight. At South Creek Ball Diamonds, there's been, as you've probably heard in the news, there's been a little bit of damage out there. There's been some fires and some break-ins and theft. And I believe, and I'm not going to be able to quote the name of the vendor, town gave them a very, very good deal on surveillance cameras and motion detectors. So, they're trying their very best, South Creek Ball Society, to alleviate that. I mean, it's not their fault. People can come through the bush and through means. So, that's just to help protect our facilities out there and our capital. That's it.
Do you want to make your other motion?
Sure.
Okay.
You ready for it?
You bet.
Okay. 9.3. I move that tender T-68437-12 be awarded to K Shaw &amp; Sons Limited, plus engineering fees, plus contingency totaling $417,500 be approved.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, is there anything else that you want to do on tonight's agenda?
No, I think I had Rick Adair explain that at length. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. That handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, and our delegation business, I think, was handled with the proclamation. So, that takes us to notice of motion, and Counselor McLean had at last council meeting introduced a notice of motion. So, Counselor McLean, I will let you make that motion and then speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move that council direct administration to work with event organizers of the East Coast Garden Party to obtain a park use permit under Parks and Recreation Areas bylaw C-E34 for 2013 and 2014 events to be held in South Bear Creek. And just speaking to a little bit of this, Mayor Given and council is, there was some talk of one year or two years, and council's looking at a few different bylaws. Protective Service bylaw says, you know, you shut her down at 11:00, and then we have a concert bylaw that says, "Go till 2:00 in the morning," and it's from the early 80s. So, going to have to be looking at a few different amenities there, and might take maybe a year. And as well, maybe the area's outgrown it, or maybe it'd be a perfect suit for this. So, council's going to be looking at that. And there's going to be an election next year, which we do know it's going to be in the fall. So, my feeling on this is, we're going to have an election right away as well. This could go on and beyond, and so it'll be done, taken care of. So, the individual East Coast Garden Party group that has invested money and time into this and been in the community, I think they've done six years now. Could be wrong. Five or six years. They've taken over from the SummerSlam, and it's the biggest outdoor concert the City of Grand Prairie has at the current moment. So...
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none? Nope. Counselor Wong?
So, I'm just wondering what the East Coast Garden Party event organizers did in the past, because I'm not sure that there was really any direction to stop them from holding that party, unless I missed something. So, what's been the procedure in the past?
So, maybe direct that to the Community Living Director, Mr. Roth?
Your worship, the East Coast Garden Party had a rental agreement through South Peace Ball Association, who rents from the city. So, basically, it's almost like South Peace Ball subletted to the East Coast Garden Party to hold their event, and permission flowed via a number of agreements. Wasn't like a permit was required in the past. Administration is reviewing this, as Counselor McLean has said, to figure, sort out a more streamlined way of processing this going forward in the future.
Okay. So, but they weren't really in any danger of not being able to hold this event, were they?
There was, no. In long story short, no.
Okay. So, in essence, all this is doing is just trying to create a process, a proactive process for them. I guess that's the way I read it.
Okay. Counselor Rice?
I guess I would be interested to be reassured that we've had the South Bear Creek Ball Association involved. You know, obviously, anything that we approve to take place out there does create some restrictions on what they're doing out there. So, it seems to me that they are a key component in our decision-making, and I'd be just interested in some reassurance along those lines.
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, as part of the review that we are carrying out, we are having conversations with South Peace Ball, as well as any other agencies that could be involved with any types of concerts, events in that location. That includes the RCMP and public health and so on. And we don't want to make it just a regulatory issue. We want to also make sure that it's a matter of good relationship with South Peace Ball, and also a matter that encourage promoters to be able to come forward and still have concerts at that location or any other outdoor location.
Okay. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. How soon does administration plan on having the review completed?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, we are looking, doing our research at this point. We've had a couple of meetings. I would anticipate some point this winter, we would be able to come forward with, to probably to a committee with a full report of our review.
Thank you. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To Councilor Rice's comment, South Peace Ball Association did send a letter to the Community Development Committee. And I would say that they reserve the right with respect to the stage to kind of manage it and use it from year to year. But in terms of that event or events such as that, they were non-committal. I would say they certainly didn't say that we don't want the event, nor did they endorse it. So they basically said it's kind of up to the city to decide what goes there. So that's that part. If I'm incorrect, somebody will correct me, I'm sure. I guess in terms of this event, I think to organize the event, they need some lead time. I think that's what Kevin was talking about, right? And so I think waiting a few months, who knows if they'll be able to get the, I guess, the performing, the groups that they want to have there. So I can see that reason for this can, this lets them move forward without waiting for a review, et cetera, et cetera. My question, Kevin, though, is the, is the two years. Like the, the one year for me is, I think, pretty, pretty appropriate. I'm just, you did put the two years in. Can I ask kind of why, what you're thinking there is?
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Councilor Radburn.
Hit the wrong button. Thank you, Councilor Radburn. The focus on the two years was talking to administration and reviewing. And I know Mr. Gary Roth has commented on they could have it by December or January. But sometimes these things, there's different bylaws, like the one bylaw on concerts from nineteen eighty-one. So you know how sometimes things can get delayed? And as exactly what you said, Councilor Radburn, about organizing and planning and getting certain bands to come and play, they need to be booking now. So say that time does come, they come towards the committee and say they can be here by December, but say it's not till the following spring, which we all know is gonna be election mode, because the government did say about four years, but it was staying in October. People's, our minds might be on something else. So, and, and in this event, Justin and Jennifer, that started this five years ago, and they got a proven track record five, six years ago, they put up all, all front, all the money into it, not like other towns that actually support a lot of it. So I think it's a good win-win for all of us. And it just says thank you for bringing such a great event to the city.
Thank you. Councilor Rice?
I, like Councilor Radburn, I have the same concern. I would like to, and I don't quite know how to, to amend the motion, certainly go-ahead plan for two thousand and thirteen. But as part of the review that administration is doing, to assist this applicant in looking at alternate locations, not to say it, it precludes, it's not going in Bear, South Bear Creek in two thousand and fourteen, but to evaluate that site against some other options. So if we pass this motion that says it's going in Bear Creek in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, and, and I, I just feel we'd be doing ourselves a disservice if we didn't evaluate other alternatives. So, and I don't quite know how to amend the motion to, because as, like I said, I support the East Coast Garden Party. I think it's a great event. So how, an amendment, maybe Mr. Corporate Services Guy, can you think of wording?
Mr. Anderson? I don't think your mic came on.
Well, Mayor Given, it does specify South Bear Creek. You could be more general in just an appropriate location within the City of Grand Prairie. That would generalize it.
Depends on your intent, Councilor Rice. If it's about making the location flexible, then that would be one suggestion. If it's about two thousand and fourteen, perhaps it'd be a, having the approval for one year. And, and then there'd be an opportunity either through committee in the process.
And I, like, I would like that. I thought about just taking the year two thousand and fourteen out. But I also want someplace in there, a clear message that we will be working with this applicant for two thousand and fourteen events. So how, I'll try to amend it by.
Councilor Rice, if there's, the difficult thing with motions, if there's two different thoughts, if there's, if there's a second thought, don't, now that the notice of motion is here, I think we can have follow-up motions that come out of it. And so if there was one motion and then a follow-up motion, that might be, maybe that's a, we'll avoid the verbal gymnastics that you're working through in your mind. So I mean, it's up to you.
I don't, I'm not sure what you're saying. Do we vote, do we vote on this, or do we just remove the year two thousand and fourteen?
Well, it's, it's up to.
Okay, I'll remove the twenty, reference to two thousand and fourteen. Now I get what you're saying.
Okay, so, and then if there's a follow-up motion to say about East Coast Garden Party in future years?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, so Councilor Rice has a, a motion to amend to, which would basically have the effect of granting those permits for the two thousand and thirteen year and, and would exclude the two thousand and fourteen, would take that out of the motion. So discussion and debate on Councilor Rice's amendment. Councilor McLean, you're in the queue. Would you like to speak to the amendment?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor Given. And I can see where Council Rice is speaking to this, but I want to make sure that if there's a follow-up motion to this, that we will work with you in two thousand and fourteen, because to even pick another venue, it's gonna take time. We won't get most information till spring, so we'll have it in two thousand and thirteen. But even go to another venue, you're gonna be spending money, making it right or fixing it. So that's why two thousand and fourteen as well was put in my mind. So I, I'm not against your motion unless there's another motion brought in about saying make sure you work for two thousand and fourteen as well in a different manner.
Well, Councilor McLean, any, if any council member would have the opportunity to make that follow-up motion, and so if you didn't hear it forthcoming, then you could even make that yourself if, if you wish to. So, Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I think that the amendment to the motion is really appropriate. Typically, when we make approvals like this, it is on an annual basis. And it's really not fair for this council to, to approve something that another council should have to walk into, especially not knowing the context behind it. So the follow-up motion, which is probably gonna be a referral to administration, is really appropriate, too. So I'm gonna support the amendment as it is.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. Just got a question to ask Mr. Gary Roth. Has there been any concerns from the public regarding having this event held at the Ball Dimes in a positive or a negative way?
Your worship, administration has received both positive and negative comments. We've received some noise concerns, but we have also see, received many comments from people who enjoy the event, either at the event or in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Okay, so any further discussion or debate on Councilor Rice's amendment? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Okay, thank you. And that motion carries, so we'll go back to Council McLean's original motion as amended. And so any discussion or debate on Councilor McLean's motion as amended? Seeing none, I'll call, sorry, Council, do you want to speak to it?
I was, I don't know if we'll vote on this and then bring a vote, make sure.
Any follow-up motions would come after we vote on this one?
After this one, okay.
Yep, yep. Okay, any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Rice?
I would move that we council direct administration to work with the event organizers of the East Coast Garden Party to evaluate potential venues, to evaluate potential venues, including but not limited to South Bear Creek Park. For the, the period two thousand and fourteen on.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on Councilor Rice's motion?
And I wonder, in speaking to it, I don't know if there needs to be something in there about, you know, maybe administration in working quickly or something, or if they, that goes without saying, because you know, we're gonna complain if you don't.
I think our administration always does their best to address things as quickly as possible, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. I think that handles all the motions that would come out of that. And that closes off that portion of our agenda. We'll move into council member reports right up at the top of the list and probably at the top of everybody's roundtable report is Councilor Rice and the AUMA. Councilor Rice?
Okay, I attended the AUMA convention in Edmonton. I think it was, seemed to go excellent. Probably the highlight of the convention for me was the premier's commitment that they were not going to balance the provincial budget on the backs of municipalities. I, I thought that was huge, a huge commitment. I think that commitment was also reflected in the, the presence of the Minister of Municipal Affairs for roughly eighty to ninety percent of the entire conference. And the number of MLAs that came and stayed, I think that the commitment was very strong as well as obviously the leaders of the opposition party were there in evidence. So I think the message of the importance of municipalities is finally making some inroads. So that was, to me, was the highlight of the convention.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. And Councilor Rice, congratulations, fantastic MC duties. And I have to say that, as always, you pulled it off. And I would say that there was nobody, premier included, who had as much airtime as Councilor Rice at the, at the convention, so. Well done, Councilor Rice. Combat sports commission, Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I attended a combat sports, combat, Canadian Combat, Combat Sport Federation meeting held in Richmond, B.C. on September twenty-second. Most of the meeting was held in camera, but I can tell you that there was directors from B.C., Quebec, Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, Alberta, and Northwest Territories. And one of the gentlemen that's on our committee here in town was elected as the representative for Alberta. So Darrell Stobie is on our board, and he got elected as the member director for Alberta. Other than that, we just talked about some core values, amateur sports versus professional sports and stuff like that, but can't really go into too much details there.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Grand Spirit Foundation, Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. In addition to, this is just a quick report on the management committee meeting of September twenty-first, held at Pleasant View Lodge in Spirit River. In addition to the portfolio, financial maintenance, and general manager reports, we received three other bits of information. One is that provincial, the provincial government is undertaking a lodge condition assessment over the next several months, so that can inform them with respect to determining appropriate source of action in terms of funding, maintenance, strategic regeneration or replacements. Secondly, we received a report outlining the priority rating for lodge accommodations that Grand Spirit uses to fill vacancies. And we also received a two thousand, two thousand and twelve Lodge Assistance Program grant breakdown. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. And we had this, Councilor Rice, did you have a question on this? Councilor Rice?
Councilor Radburn, recently, the other day, the province announced an increase in assisted living fees for seniors. Has your board had an opportunity to discuss that? Do you anticipate it'll have any impact on the Grand Spirit Foundation?
Councilor Radburn?
No, that was more for long, long-term care facilities, not, not lodge operations.
Okay, thank you.
And South Peace Regional Archives, Councilor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much. We had a meeting here on September twenty-first. And just to give you a real rundown here, the summer of two thousand and twelve has been a good time for getting out into the community. The marketing plan has been completed, and the promotions committee has had great ideas on how to make the archives a more exciting resource for the community. The National Heritage Fair Project from this area featured an interview with Karen Burgess talking about the river and Alexander and Agnes Forbes. And we had a lovely staff luncheon with the Grand Prairie Museum staff at the Forbes Homestead. Sessions from May first to August thirty-first included items dating back to nineteen twenty-eight and as current as two thousand and two. And there was about twenty-seven major contributions given during that time. We've got membership of eighty-five people, and volunteered hours so far at the facility has been five hundred and ninety-seven hours. And I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Excellent, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. I don't believe there were any other agency board and commission reports. So let's start with council roundtable and Councilor O'Toole. Since you're the last one on the microphone, why don't we start there? And we'll work our way around to Councilor Radburn afterwards with that motion.
Okay, thank you very much. On September eighteenth, I met with the Chamber of Commerce and the Edmonton International Airport for an information exchange. There was a number of representatives from both the chamber and the international airport. And we just basically talked about what their progress is in the future and what the Grand Prairie Chamber and what the Grand Prairie Airport Commission has got planned. On September nineteenth, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Meeting. And after that, I attended the Stable Transport System course. And it was a basically a management skills course. And it was later on, it ran until the evening. On the twentieth, I attended the Meals on Wheels Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. Great number of people turned out. It was a great, a lot of people go there to contribute to the Meals on Wheels program to just drive the meals around to people. But it's more than that. It's a relationship building with talking to the, the staff and, and the, the people that require the meals. Later that day, we had a land visioning session for maybe some ideas that the city may look at in the future. On the twenty-first, I attended the South Peace Regional Archives meeting. And the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, like I said, I was at the Canadian Combat Sports Federation meeting in Richmond, B.C. On the twenty-fourth, I attended the Breakfast with the Boys, held out at the Tech Center, which is a, a great, great breakfast and topic that it involves the hardship that some ladies, teenagers, boys, men have. And, oh, I don't know, it's just a tough topic to talk about. And the, this group of people are trying to promote just being a nice person and not being so rough and tough. Tour of the Karen on the Boulevard was done later on in the afternoon. I attended the AUMA Day Program on Municipal Sustainability. That was a one-day course. And I attended the grand opening of the art gallery of Grand Prairie on the twenty-eighth. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the Legion Eighty-Fifth Year Celebration. And on the twenty-ninth, also, I attended the Toys for Tots Motorcycle Ride.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So September nineteenth, we had a city annexation team meeting. September twentieth, Meals on Wheels Volunteer Luncheon and the visioning session, council visioning session. Twenty-fourth, oh, then I did, I did, actually didn't represent the council. Well, quickly, I did attend the Rotary District Conference held in Grand Prairie for a couple days on twenty-one, twenty-two. Twenty-fourth, Breakfast with the Boys. Karen on the Boulevard tour, and really pleased to see the progress of that project. Will certainly add to our affordable housing alternatives in our spare city. The twenty-fifth, I attended the Sunwing Signature Vacations Announcement and Reception. So that, I think, has been announced within our community. And it's a Wednesday for about fourteen weeks, starting in December. Trip to Grand Prairie, Fort Mac, Puerto Vallarta, and then back. A week later, two weeks later, however long you want to stay. Twenty-sixth, I attended the Parkinson MS Society's office opening and also the Faith Circle of Honor, which was a, behind the full care center. Canadian Mental Health Society is looking at working with that landowner to, to work on some arrangement that might make that available. available to them for housing. And September twenty-seventh, I was pleased, I was able to go to Arlen Miller's retirement. And just coincidentally, since I was coming, I was asked to present three medallions. These medallions were provided by the town of Slave Lake. And they took the initiative to make, I guess, application or advocated for provincial medals for these people who really provided outstanding efforts and service to the town of Slave Lake during and after their wildfire disaster a couple of years ago. So, I was very pleased that on behalf of, actually, actually the town of Slave Lake, to present medals to Superintendent Miller, Corporal Carol McKinley, and Staff Sergeant Rod Cassilney. So, I was, I was able to do that on behalf of council. Twenty-eighth, I had tender openings and document signings here. And twenty-eighth, also Art Gallery of Grand Prairie Opening Reception and Ribbon Cutting. Outstanding facility. Something that our community, I'm sure, is proud of and will be proud of for many, many, many years. I kept thinking to myself, I was talking to people, who would have thunk in Grand Prairie, Alberta, we'd have this? Then I thought to myself, come on, Lauren, we, I've always had a vision and we, we've always had doers. As one of the speakers, so if we combine those two things, things can happen in Grand Prairie. We certainly do make things happen. September thirtieth, I literally ran into Counselor Crokin at the Labor Council BBQ. And the Labor Council was Friday BBQ for those who are unemployed or underemployed. And we brought some coats to contribute and people could, could access those coats at, at the BBQ. And, and today, we had another city, city annexation team meeting, getting ready for our meeting on Wednesday. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, as Counselor Radburn said, I attended the Sunwing Vacation Open House. And they are going to be traveling from Grand Prairie to Port Aviada for every week for, for fourteen weeks. So, you know, you can go for one or two, or you could go for the full fourteen if you, if you so desire. After that, I headed south to our capital, Edmonton, to the AUMA Conference. Listening to our premier, Alison Redford, speaking, she's very, very intrigued about investing in families and building community and continuing to support the MSI is a major thing she spoke about. She also wants to secure Alberta's economic future, the money we create from the oil field, and add it to our social development programs around the province. And she's also initiating an extreme pipeline safety review because all the pipelines that are coming from here to the, to the Pacific Ocean in the hopefully near future. I also learnt, there's a whole bunch of, of online courses we can take as municipal politicians, so I'll be entertaining, entertaining some of them in the near future. And I was able to listen to another seminar, For the Love of Cities, Peter Yegum, Peter, same guy that did R1 here. Very, very good speaker and very inspirational on, on how to grow your city. And one thing he really mentioned was that, you know, people want to live where is, where it is on the rise. And Grand Prairie, as we're growing, we all know that it's on the rise around here. And I'm sure we're going to have an influx of, of more people and our, our population's going to grow as we, as we develop our city and, and make it better and bigger. And one thing they mentioned is, as, as a public speaker, or not a speaker, as you can tell, we can, the public message, what the public message is that, that we have as leaders and, and do we understand what the public and the community really wants and how we can deliver on that message. And I guess the other thing, as Helen already mentioned, was the amount of MLAs that were at the, at the convention this year. They were, they were there in full form and, and didn't seem like they were hiding like they have been known to do in the past. And it was, it was great to see they were all there, listening to, to our concerns. And then I came home to Grand Prairie where I love to live. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On Wednesday the nineteenth, I attended a subdivision, a sub-development appeal hearing, lasted quite a lengthy time. And I ran over at noon to the Canadian Home Builders Association Luncheon at Quality Inn. And later that day at 5:00 P.M., I brought, welcomed Mayor Given and council on behalf of us, the, to the Grand Prairie Regional College Circle of Aboriginal Students. And I kind of thought it would just be a five or ten-minute, but there was cleansing by Sage Smoke, which I was quite impressed that I was cleansed. And then the Ashham dancers from Winnipeg, they were very, very entertaining. They were doing the Red River jig and I learned a few new steps. And it was indeed a highlight for the whole college. The theater was packed and inspiration for, for all the students. On the twentieth, again, the next morning, Thursday morning, at nine A.M., I brought greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and council to the library conference at the Grand Prairie Motor Inn. There's almost two hundred registration, registrants there, some from far away Zama Lake. This is the thirtieth year we've held the convention, so kudos to Linda and all the, all the staff there that did a really good job there. Then on noon, I, along with other members of council, attended the Meals on Wheels, the Volunteer Recognition Lunch at the Legion. A good job again by Mo and his staff for the lunch and for putting that on. Then later that night, I attended at seven P.M. the old timers meeting at the cabinet at the, down at the Tech Center. Then the next morning, or the next day, at two P.M., I opened tenders, a number of tenders. And what I wanted to do was give kudos to, to the Rotary for holding that convention here. Apparently, it was one of the first times we had, we had almost five hundred delegates here. I mean, wow, what a, what a great community builder. And of course, the Rotary just rolls on. On September twenty-third, at three o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday, I brought greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and council to the renaming of Diamond Number Three to the Sean Wallace Diamond Number Three. Just a ton of people out there showing the gratitude by the Ball Diamond Association of what, a lot of work that Sean has done and what a great athlete he is. Then, in the morning, Monday morning, I also attended the Breakfast of the Big Boys at the Tech Center. Then I was on to AUMA with other councillors. One of the, one of the sessions was a great session with Deputy Minister of Municipal Affairs at Mayor Given and council. We really had some real good ideas sharing both ways. And I attended one session on PERMA. And it was about leadership in communities. It was, the acronym of PERMA is Positive Emotions, Engagement, Relationships, Meaning, and Achievement. So, really, real good for our communities and I'll have some of that to pass on. Thanks again to MC, of course, of the, of the event. Counselor Rice, she did just a drumming job. And you can ask her about the drums, there was a thousand drums there. And then on Sunday the thirtieth, I got stepped on by Counselor Radburn. It was a lovely barbecue and you were just to lay on the grass there on the hill. And I was right there with, with the homeless. And he gave me a coat, actually, and I didn't really need one. You were, I said, you could just give them up front there. So, of course, Lauren did. And a great work done by the United Nurses and QP. Randy Wald was one of the, one of the head chefs there. So, very good, very good job. And today, if you'll allow me, Mayor Given, I attended a funeral for a great friend and a community builder, Deacon Ray Stitson. There was fifteen priests and Archbishop Gerald Pettipaw to a packed Saint Joseph's Church. And I want to quote from his obituary. "In lieu of flowers and donations to a charity, we ask that you give thanks to God, hug your children, and tell the people in your life that you love them. If you need to give anything, give your time. Give it to someone less fortunate than you are. Give it to making your community a better place." Thanks, Deacon Ray. That's all I have.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. On the eighteenth, I attended a night talk board meeting. Not a lot to report from there, except that they are having the annual ski board and bike swap on November second and third out at Evergreen Park. So, if anyone's in the market for a new, new skis, snowboard, or bike, please make your way out there. I, on the twentieth, I attended the luncheon with the Meals on Wheels volunteers. The twenty-fourth, I toured the Cairn. Same as my counterparts have said here, what a, what a fantastic site. Really looking forward to that progressing along. It looks like Brad has put an awful lot of thought into the design of this facility. And I think it's smart design. I think it's really going to be an asset to Grand Prairie. Twenty-eighth, attended the opening of the new art gallery. And Counselor Radburn, I think, covered it off fairly well there. It really is a fantastic place. On the twenty-ninth, I attended the, the fundraising event, Chair Extraordinaire for the Grand Prairie Center for Suicide Prevention at the Elks Hall. And it was a full house out there, big crowd. And they raised a lot of money. And it was, it was a lot of fun out there. It was a good time, so I look forward to seeing that one again next year. This morning, I attended the steering team meeting for the CRI. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Counselor Rice?
At the, the evening prior to the kickoff of the AUMA convention, the President's Dinner, I had the honor of sharing a table with His Honor, the Lieutenant Governor, and Her Honor, his wife. It was a sort of tremendous pride for me that they were so excited that they were coming to Grand Prairie and got to stay overnight to take in two events, the opening of the art gallery and the Legion's anniversary. So, their obvious delight in that, as I say, was a source of great pride. Was particularly pleased this evening to have the mayor issue the proclamation on breast cancer. I just would point out that starting Wednesday, Victoria's attic will be stringing bras across the bridge. And I want to thank the city for their cooperation in getting the wires up to do that. And Vanishings will be doing, shaving underarms for donations with all the funds going to the Cancer Foundation. So, both those are in aid of cancer education, research, and awareness. And I, so it would appear, and I'm sure there's many others, that will be taking place once again. The community of Grand Prairie will come through in flying colors to support these type of, of awareness campaigns. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. On September eighteenth, I was in Fairview for an open house for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. Really interesting process. I'm going to be probably participating in one or two more. The next one's going to be on September twentieth in Fox Creek at their community hall. I probably won't be at that one, but I will be at the one in Beaver Lodge.
October twentieth?
Sorry, October twentieth. I guess that's, you know what, I probably have that date wrong, too, because I was looking at the September schedule. Thank you, Counselor Rice. Let me just pull that up really quick before I, I mess things up any further. The next one is in Fort Vermillion on October thirtieth. So, and that's at their community complex. And they typically run from four o'clock to eight P.M. in the evening. And we invite all the public to come out and get some information about what the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance does, as well as providing your feedback. Okay, so, sorry, I'm going to have to pull up my notes again. On September twentieth, I attended a Wapiti Corridor Planning Society Board meeting. And I just wanted to let everyone know, we're actually going, starting round two of all our stakeholder meetings now. And eventually, by the end of the year, we are going to have an open house for the general public to see a draft of the, the multi-use plan for the, for the entire Wapiti Corridor area. On Saturday, September twenty-second, I attended the RCMP Regimental Ball and brought greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and council. I'd have to say that was a real fantastic event. It was amazing to see the RCMP officers in their red surges. It was an era of formality and, and there was a bit of ceremony there, but it was also a really fun event. I really highly recommend, the next time they put this on, that council members make every effort to attend this. Apparently, they haven't had one of these in, in a really, really long time. And they had people coming from all over the region just to attend this ball. September twenty-fourth, I attended the Breakfast with the Boys. Also, on the twenty-fourth, the tour of the Cairn on the Boulevard. Later that evening, there was a reception for the Highway to Mexico Pass drivers. The reason I wanted to mention that is Mazatlan, Mexico, is our sister city. And the past mayor, Jorge Abel, was also present. He flew in from Mazatlan. And he wanted to stress to us the importance of this project with us delivering fire trucks, ambulances, school buses, and wheelchair-accessible vehicles to them. They said that it's, it's really changed what those smaller, poorer communities can actually offer. There, there's at least a dozen communities now that have ambulances, where they had absolutely none before. The fire service is able to cover a much larger area because I think we, we've contributed over seventy-five percent of the vehicles that are part of their fleets now. And the buses have done everything from assist in, in emergency situations when, when there's been flooding or, or terrible storms in the area, to just bringing students in that, from outlying schools to education centers, especially their, their aquarium. So, they were very appreciative and they encouraged us to continue that project and to continue with us forging that sister-city relationship with them.
Sure. Counselor Rice, you had a question?
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that initiative with Mazatlan is a community initiative, not a city initiative, I believe.
Right, the city has signed a sister-city agreement, although that, that initiative has been run by the Rotary Clubs of Grand Prairie, spearheaded by Alan Keakley at the Swan City Rotary Club.
I guess my, my point is that-
So, the city has never put any money in.
That's easy, thank you.
Okay, September twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, I attended the AUMA convention. And I just wanted to provide a couple of comments. I think that this was the first time I'd seen so many provincial representatives between the MLAs and ministers there. And I was really appreciative of that, being able to talk with them on not only a, a formal basis, at the, at the conversations with them, but the, you, you had a chance to mingle with them and, and speak with them on an impersonal basis. And I thought that that was, that was much better, informal basis, sorry, I should say. And our two local MLAs, Everett McDonald and Wayne Drysdale, who's the Minister of Infrastructure, were also there, attending and representing our area. So, that, that was fantastic. Just to stress how important it is for, for us to be a part of that. First of all, the city was able to pass its two resolutions without too many problems. But there was one resolution that came up on the screen fifty-fifty. And typically, a tie would automatically defeat a motion, but they did a, a vote count and the count, yeah, the, the motion passed in favor by one vote. So, you know, had one person not attended, that, that resolution would not have gone through. Yeah, I suppose, yeah. Just a couple more things. On the twenty-eighth, there was the grand opening of our art gallery of Grand Prairie. Just a fantastic event. I can't say how impressive that, that facility is. You feel like you're in a different city. And it, it does preserve the old historical value of that building and still bring in all the, the, the new look of a modern art gallery and the new feel of it. So, fantastic for everyone who took part in that, including past councils and administration. Yeah, I guess the only two, two things I had was that, you know, I did attend the visioning session with council and annexation negotiating team meetings as well in that time period. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Given. Besides the regular duties, the main thing I was looking forward to was the AUMA. I was there from September twenty-four to September twenty-eighth. And it's AUMA Convention and Trade Show. And I'll just say the trade show quick because there's lots of good stuff there. But I also go there and fill up for my kids. I think I did a lot of shopping for them. I bring them notepads and everything, but they, because five days is, you know, a couple of days is okay, but five days, I'm glad to do that. And there's a smile on their face for a whole week. So, okay, and with that, the other thing I want to say, too, is with Helen Rice, thank you, thank you, Helen Rice, for our community being so strong in AUMA. thank you, thank you, Helen Rice, for our community being so strong in AUMA. You are a strong, strong contributor. Majority of people know Helen Rice wherever you go. And she works very, very hard for our community. Premier Alison Redford spoke. We heard about government will not live on the backs of municipalities. Okay. And the one thing I did like is MSI funding will stay until 2016. They extended it three years, which is really, really good news. And I want to talk about a few things. I went to, one that I believe in is the Northern Gate Pipeline. I've spoke of it before. I went to a group there and I'm looking forward to hopefully eventually putting a pipeline through. One of the sessions I went to was women in municipal government. And I have to believe there was lots of ladies there. And I went there for a reason because my house has four ladies, well, two girls, two women. And some of the stuff they talked about is UN says a minimum of thirty percent should be elected to reflect women's rights on councils or whatever in Canada. Twenty-four percent is the average of women in councillors that are on councils in Canada. Twenty-five percent councillors, sixteen percent mayors. And twenty-five percent of MPs are women. We rank forty-six of one hundred and eighty-nine countries. So room to improve and hopefully, down the road, there'll be more stuff. I talked about different issues I see, where the improvement of more ladies hired or whatever. And I'm looking forward to that evolving. So that was one of my better ones, actually, that I did attend. And another one I want to speak to, Councillor Wong was saying, was about MLAs. This is my third AUMA. And actually, and everybody has said, even individuals that were there beforehand, that I'm surprised how many ministers were there and MLAs. And like I just brought this here and it just shows you a schedule from nine to 10, just the different rooms you can go to meet and speak to the ministers. And then from 10 to 11:30. And I think some of you know I'm frank and I spoke to a couple of ministers. One said of Honorable Jeff Johnson, we have a new school, it's a few years old, Derek Taylor. And it's already overfilled and some of the kids aren't getting gym class because it's overfilled. So I said, you know, we've had it through a few booms and busts and maybe we can learn from our mistakes and build the schools a little bigger. And of course, Doug Griffiths, which Councillor Rice said was all over the place, actually. I commend him because there was comments of good job and there was comments, you got to do better, be more equitable. And hopefully, that'll happen down the road. And the one other one I asked a question was Honorable Stephen Kahn. He's MLA for St. Albert and it's a new ministry, Ministry of Enterprise. So I do think this is going to turn out as, you know, we are, we're ready. The city is number one in Canada for entrepreneurship. And I think this will evolve and actually help the city of Grand Prairie in the near future. And as well, all the leaders there, except for Danielle Smith, she was in, she's on the United States on a tour, Raj Sherman. And I was excited. And the one thing that stuck out, Helen, was local matters. And we're hearing more about local. So I'm hoping the provincial government gets that in healthcare and a whole bunch of avenue stuff. So that's everything. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor McLean. I'll try to be brief since the number of the events that I attended have already been mentioned. I also attended the meeting with the representatives from Edmonton International Airport, seeking to explain a little bit about service and get some feedback. It was interesting to note that Edmonton International Airport sees Grand Prairie as their single largest portion of their business, counting for about twenty-five percent of the flights or their passionate traffic that come through the airport. So they really view Grand Prairie as an important market for them. And so that's part of the reason why they're out here doing some outreach. I had an opportunity to bring greetings to the Meals on Wheels volunteer celebration. Obviously, enjoy doing that every year. I certainly appreciate the work that the Meals on Wheels volunteers do every year. Later that day, I had an opportunity to conduct a tour of the Eastlink Centre with some of our friends from Mazatlan, the Rotary District Governor from the Rotary District in that area, as well as former mayor Jorge Abell. I was able to give them a tour of the Eastlink Centre, which hadn't been constructed when they were here, and also of the Montrose Cultural Centre, which was just getting started when they were here last time. They were certainly impressed with everything that had been happening in Grand Prairie. And it should, it was important, obviously, to keep up those relationships. Mr. Jorge Abell is no longer, obviously, in local government in Mexico. He spent the last six months working at the federal level with a national party. His candidate was successful in winning the presidency of Mexico. And so now he has a little bit of time in between when that party takes over and when he'll find out what his new job might be. So we certainly will hope that our friends in Mexico received positions that they were looking for. He has a background as a marine biologist and he said Department of Fisheries might be nice. So it'll be interesting to see where he ends up. But it was great to be able to give them a little bit of a tour about everything that's happening here in Grand Prairie. I attended at Musca Cepi Park to do the opening ceremony for the, which walk was that? For the HIV walk, HIV and AIDS walk. Pleasure to be there and see so many people attending to join in. And on Sunday, September twenty-third, I was over at the Grand Prairie Public Library to do a course, a public course on civic responsibility and basically a local government 101. Wanted to get an opportunity to get out there and speak to people and maybe dispel some of the myths, like that the mayor gets a crown or he gets two votes on council or anything like that. But also to speak about some of the basics about how anybody can come to one of our city council meetings and how issues are dealt with through our committee system. And had about nine or 10 people attend, which was great considering that Sunday afternoon, it was about twenty-three or twenty-four above. And it was great to see people come out and attend. On Monday, the twenty-fourth, I was at the Breakfast with the Boys and was happy and honored to be able to be a host of that again this year. We're looking forward to next year and ensuring that we get probably a wider diversity in the audience and more of the young men that we're hoping to influence to be attending the event. And so I'm going to put some work in with the committee to ensure that we can do that next year. I also took the tour of the Cairn on the Boulevard Development. And I'd have to agree with what Councillor Monroe said, it's going to be a fantastic asset to the community. I'm very pleased that the role the city of Grand Prairie had to play in making that happen. I believe that it's going to be a long-term asset to our community. I also attended the reception for Sunwing Vacations. Fantastic to see them utilizing Grand Prairie as a base of operations. They obviously understand, just like Edmonton Airport understands, the importance of this market. And I think that that bodes well for the future of our airport and also the future of our region. As I've heard from people, people have told me that they love Grand Prairie, they love the North. And one of the things that would make it just that much better is if they wanted, when they want to go out on vacation, if they can get out easier. And so I think services like the Sunwing Vacation will be really appreciated out in the community. I also attended the AUMA convention. I'd have to agree that there were more MLAs in attendance than I've ever seen. Kind of had me wondering if there are other provincial conferences that always have that many MLAs attending. I think maybe that was the case in the past. And maybe this is a shift with the new face of the provincial government that they're more involved at the Urban Municipalities Association. It was fantastic to see. Again, my congratulations to Councillor Rice, who did a fantastic job of emceeing. I don't think anybody around the table could say it enough times to really get the point across about how influential Councillor Rice is at the AUMA and how well-recognized she is. There's not anybody that you could walk across the conference floor who doesn't know who Councillor Rice is. And I think it also needs to be said that Councillor Rice can give them and she can take them. She does them equally well with good humor from the podium. So thanks very much, Councillor Rice, for all your work at the conference. Many members of council mentioned the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie grand opening. If I could, I'd like to say congratulations to all the city staff that were involved in that project. In particular, Lois Harper spent a significant amount of time, along with a number of other city staff. And I'd also like to say thank you and congratulations to Robert Stephen from the art gallery. We all know that this has been Robert's passion and basically driving force for the last number of years. And for Robert to keep art alive in Grand Prairie and the art gallery alive in Grand Prairie without a building is a pretty fantastic feat. So I wish him and the rest of the art gallery of Grand Prairie board well in their new building. I think they'll be a fantastic resource to the community. On Saturday, the twenty-ninth, I attended the eighty-fifth anniversary celebrations for the Royal Canadian Legion and was honored to be able to be joined by the Lieutenant Governor. And later that evening, I attended the Third Annual Wearable Arts Show at the Centre for Creative Arts as a part of Culture Days in Alberta. If you didn't get a chance to go, you missed out. You should go because often, sorry, you should go to the Centre for Creative Arts because often they will show some of the pieces. They'll have them on display. And you would not believe the amount of work that went into these fantastic creations and whimsical creations. I'll say a couple sort of short overviews of the night. Dress made of condoms, hula hooping, and hula hoop hits mayor in face. That's all. So if you weren't there, you missed out. And then on this Monday morning, I was here at City Hall and was able to welcome two grade six classes from a Cole St. Gerard. Was able to give them a little bit of the local government 101. And we spent about forty-five minutes here in council chambers discussing what happens with council. And I gave them a background story on each and every one of the council members. So just in case you have any kids that are out there that say, hey, I know about you, that's where it came from. And I believe that was everything that I had to report. So if there was nothing else, thanks very much for your attention and we'll adjourn our meeting.